Monday, November twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, regular session at the Anamosa City Council, at City Hall Council Chambers. One point oh roll call.
Rich.
Here.
Kay.
Here.
John.
Here.
Rod.
Here.
Cody.
Here.
Betty.
Here.
Two point oh pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three point oh motion to approve the minutes from the following meeting, November thirteenth, twenty eighteen.
Move to approve.
First by Betty.
Second.
Second right by Rich. All those, any changes or adjustments? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carried. Four point oh public hearing. I'll, uh, public hearing on proposed designation of the twenty eighteen Anamosa Housing Urban Renewal area and on an urban renewal plan and project, and I'll open the public hearing.
Just to clarify this, it's create a new urban renewal area, um, for the, essentially the undeveloped area between the existing Meadow Ridge and Caitlin Avenue, um, it is including properties that were in an existing urban renewal area, those were undeveloped, so they're being moved and added to this new area. Um. Uh, let's see. The timeline on the, uh, the, the area will, uh, last for twenty years, uh, and, um. I guess that's about, about it.
Have you had any comments from anybody on this?
I haven't had any public comment, no.
Okay.
Um. Again, this is just the area, we ha- will have our public hearing and discussion on the actual development agreement on our next meeting.
So, because it's a public hearing, if somebody had something, they should be here to know what to say.
Yes.
Or submit.
Or, yeah, or have submitted something.
Well, since there's nothing, I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Co- Cody to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Opposed? Carried. Five point oh presentations, none. Six point oh proclamations. Six point one home rule proclamation.
This is, uh, in recognition of the fiftieth anniversary of Iowa adopting home rule.
Home rule proclamation from the City of Anamosa from the Office of the Mayor. Fiftieth anniversary of municipal home rule. Whereas home rule is essential to effective and responsive municipal govern- governance in Iowa and provides flexibility to make decisions at the local level, whereas decisions are made closest to the people they impact and be, and can be tailored to fit local conditions, needs, and concerns in order to better serve taxpayers. Whereas the City of Anamosa supports home rule and the powers it provides to make local decisions that best reflect the residents of our community, whereas the citizens of Iowa approved the adoption of home rule in the Constitution of Iowa on November fifth, nineteen sixty-eight. Whereas this is the fiftieth year of municipal home rule in Iowa, whereas home rule continues to be vital to the health and prosperity of all cities in Iowa. Now therefore, I Dale Barnes, Mayor of Anamosa, Iowa, do hereby, hereby recognize the fiftieth anniversary of municipal home rule in Iowa and proudly support its continued authority. Okay. Council action item, seven point oh, community betterment. Seven point one, discussion and possible action on second reading of ordinance amending chapter seventy-four of the city code to change the definition of a permitted via coven prescribed new regulations for ridge destruction.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Betty.
Have you heard anything from anyone on this?
I have a couple of concerns with it, I guess, um. With the county adopting a UTV ordinance of their own, uh, will everybody that enters Anamosa on their UTV passing through need to have this, even if they're licensed with the DNR already?
Yes.
Which I think is good, I, I'm okay with that.
Any further discussion? And it's a roll vote.
Rod.
Yes.
Cody.
No.
Betty.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Kay.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Possible waiver of the third reading? All right, seven point two, discussion and possible action on resolution to declare necessity and establish an urban renewal area pursuant to section four oh three point four of the Code of Iowa and approve urban renewal plan and project for the twenty eighteen Anamosa Housing Ur- Urban Renewal Area.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
First by Rich.
Second.
Second by John. Any further discussion? No further discussion, it's a roll vote.
Cody.
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Seven point three, discussion and possible action on resolution setting date of meeting at which it is proposed to approve a development agreement with the D O U Land Development Incorporated, including annual appropriations, tax increment payments.
This is just setting the date.
Setting the date for the public hearing on the development agreement.
I move to set the date for December seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, six P M, City Hall.
Second.
First by Cody, second by Rich to set it.
So, at the time we, uh, set the date and we have, will we have everything in at that time?
We, we should.
Okay.
Any further discussion? And it's a roll vote.
Betty, yes. Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Seven point four, discussion and possible action on resolution approving the preliminary plat of Meadow Ridge ninth and tenth addition to Anamosa, Iowa.
Apologize for not, well, there were maps included in the packet, but we sent out, uh, some additional P E S today, and then we've got the larger maps up, uh, but essentially, we've got the two plats, um, that correlate with our urban renewal area. And, uh, they, these have been recommended for approval from planning and zoning board, um. The only, really only recommendation we had from engineering was to request an updated drainage study um, on the storm water, which they said they would provide, we haven't seen that yet, and I don't know what augments into that type of study, but, um, I mean, if you, if you could potentially delay to get that, I, I don't know, um. Everything else seems to make sense, uh. There is gonna be some modification to the, uh, wastewater plans along Chamber Drive, uh, and essentially adding, uh, a new, some new sections of main, um, it, it'll work out in the better interest of the city, uh, in terms of maintenance down the road. Um, those don't aren't shown on the maps, but, uh, could be just discussing with Bryce this morning, but, uh, the main in, along Chamber is so deep that if we had to make repairs, it'd just become quite costly and uh, difficult, so, uh, he's willing to work and put in new sections of main that are lower, or a, really a higher depth, so that, uh, they'll still feed into that original main, but instead of having twenty service connections along Chamber, we'll just go in, uh, through, either through the manhole, existing manholes, or in one connection rather than all this.
Because of the problems in that development out there in that area to begin with? And this is only approving of a preliminary? Is it best to wait until the study's done and that's been changed and then approve it? Or go, I mean, does it make sense to approve something that we're waiting on changes for, I guess?
Um.
Or do we table it until that's, that survey's done and that's done?
A- again, you could go either way, I, I thought Bryce would be here to answer some questions, but, uh, um, uh, again, we do have the final plat procedure, but it's, uh, I, I am, uh, probably it's best to wait until that information, especially with the drainage study, just so we, I mean, can be sure that it's going to be adequate, uh, for the new development.
I make a motion to table this.
I'll second it. Table until.
I was just thinking, does December seventeenth meeting?
Well, depends on how soon they can get the study done.
They get this stuff.
So, just until they get the study done? Can he bring it back when the study's done? Him determine when it is back on the table?
Yeah, w- uh.
I guess.
Yeah, we'll, we'll table it until we have the, the study.
If it wasn't for already having problems out there, I wouldn't. Okay, I s- just table it until he has the study done.
I think so.
Yep.
Okay.
So.
So, the mapping that was provided to us, which is also, uh, versions of what is here, I do not see any grade or elevation on the maps. Thought that was typical to be in preliminary, so it could transpire, transfer over to, uh, the permanent. The study may capture, but also there is no, uh, stormwater flow easements on the pro- private property, private property lines. There is on the the backside of the houses that face Caitlin to the Meadow Ridge sixth addition. But, on some of these other property lines, there is not. If we can make sure that's defined. My suggestion would be a ten-foot easement where all private property bumps private property. That's not already called out as far as the Caitlin Meadow Ridge sixth addition.
Any easement for the stormwater?
Here we call it. Twenty foot. My thought is each one of these should have ten foot on both sides. All these. These. Stormwater easement.
Yeah, that's the only one.
Do you think they just decided that the stone lines easement?
So, we can make sure that's.
There weren't any easement between each.
I think.
Pardon?
You were, you weren't even easement between each of the property.
Cause it talks about utility easement.
Along.
With the dotted.
Yeah.
Well, all of them, council.
So, they just.
Chamber.
This whole thing is easement.
All those that face Chambers.
Where, where exactly, like, like here?
Well, it is, you see here, you've got, this looks like a property line, but that looks like a property line.
I believe we can.
So, it looks like this.
Those are the property lines up there.
So, I'm saying that there should be a ten-foot easement on both sides of this, identifying stormwater.
But I'm not pos.
We only have eight foot setback for building.
That's showing, that should be like a property.
I have seen it on other.
Yeah, the utility easement should kind of run.
Uh.
It's amazing how when you have a big problem with one development, you're all cautious and all together.
Utility should be along the street.
Oh, look, and that should be, look at that, I, I mean, I, it, it looks like he's intending to have a grade toward, or, uh, drain towards the street, and then he's got the stormwater along Chambers Line. Um, but, and then along, uh, between, uh, council and existing Caitlin, there's the stormwater main between those two s- uh, developments, and then they drain through one easement towards that, uh, retention pond, so I don't know that it's necessary to have the.
Well, and in reading the, um, planning and zoning meeting, he did address that they put in storm sewer easement along the back of the properties on Caitlin to put intakes in to catch the water. Um, and he stated that it'll be tied in and looped around, if it'll connect and be tied into this development. But what about the ones that aren't backed up?
Oh, let's see.
And then this line is.
I mean, I guess I don't understand.
That's the property.
You're right, you'd be nice for future development.
Well.
So, uh, I mean.
So, here's.
Mm-hmm.
Here's that easement.
Yep.
And that stormwater intake, and then it comes over here and jogs over to the retention pond. So, the ones that don't back up to Caitlin, back up to the street, so they would drain right to the city street. They're not going from one property onto another. Well, they, they're, no, there's one here.
So, I was gonna say, all them?
There's one here.
I was, yeah.
And it goes through here. And then these ones don't have any backyard neighbors, they have the retention pond.
Right. But them other ones, kind of.
Yeah, they, they have storm piping right here, between the backyards.
Here.
Them.
Also.
Here it starts, and exits into this pond.
You know, like, this is the street.
Right.
Inexistant, so it looks like they had the same thing here, and probably running the line.
Comes over here like this.
Here to the retention pond.
And it picks all this up from whatever street this is.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we knew we have the study.
Questions that you wanna address before?
Well, in a previous table, they have the study done, we'll also get time to have the wastewater things done, just put on it too.
We look at this again. Yeah, they'll update those plans, I make sure to be able to get that done.
That, make sure the water is done too. So, we won't do anything with seven four, we'll just table it. All right, ready to move on?
Need a vote.
Oh.
Sorry.
Oh.
Don't need a roll vote, just a vote.
Well, okay.
You have a motion in a second.
All th- all those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Carried. Seven point five, discussion and possible action on resolution approving the preliminary plat of Country Club Estate second addition to Anamosa, Iowa.
Kind of the same vote.
Same thing, yeah.
Table that, yeah, too.
Table it.
Table it.
Maybe I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to table Country Club plat.
Until drainage is received.
Until the drainage study is, has been received.
Second.
First by Rich, second by John, to table that. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Carried. Seven point six, discussion and possible action on resolution setting date for public hearing amending chapter one sixty-five point twenty-three of the city code to amend the regulations regarding driveways and off-street parking.
Uh, this recommendation coming from planning and zoning, but all amendments to the zoning ordinance is required public hearing, um. Okay, I believe I've got the trouble, we're planning to set that for January fourteenth meeting.
Mm-hmm, the first meeting in January.
Make the motion to set the public hearing for January fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, six P M, City Hall.
Second.
First by Cody, second by Rich. To set that for January fourteenth. And that's a roll vote.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Seven point seven, discussion and possible action on resetting the regular December tenth, twenty eighteen council meeting to December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, and canceling the regular December twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen.
So moved, second.
First by Cody, second by Rich, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Carried. Eight point oh, public safety, eight point one, motion to approve a renewal of beer and liquor license. A renewal of class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sale privileges, Tyler and Downing eatery.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Cody. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Carried. Nine point oh, public works, none. Ten point oh, finance. Ten point one, discussion and possible action approving annual financial report for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
So moved.
First by Betty.
Second.
Second by Kay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Carried. Ten point two, discussion and possible action approving annual urban renewal report for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Cody. Any discussion? All, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Carried. Ten point three, discussion and possible action approving change order number seven for the twenty seventeen S D P Street Project in the amount of four hundred and forty-nine dollars for Horsefield Construction.
Move to approve.
First by Betty.
Second.
Second by John. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Carried. Ten point four, discussion and possible action on resolution approving and accepting the work done by Horsefield Construction on a twenty seventeen S D P Street Project.
So moved.
Second.
First by Cody, second by Rich. And it's a roll vote.
Is, uh, anyone here from MS Consultants?
Yeah.
Can you explain the delay on the project?
Try, um, so with the, I guess it's taking us long getting proper documentation for the D O T. A lot of that's my fault, didn't, didn't get, didn't have some of the proper documentation, got some of it to the D O T late. Um, and just here in the last couple of weeks, finally got the final stuff kinda ironed out, um, so it's been a long process, and, and it's it's on me for that, and I apologize, and, uh, uh, you know, I got through the winter and, and tried to remember what happened and, and you know, got busy with other stuff, you know, I couldn't give you any kind of excuse that I could, but the bottom line is it, uh, it was on me, and it, it just took me that long to get, uh, to get the proper documentation for the D O T to sign off on, so, um.
Scott, I can respect the fact that you owned it.
They changed that.
We've all been there. Unfortunately.
So, uh, yeah, it's been a long time coming, and, and, uh, I apologize for that, and, uh, uh, we finally got it figured out, so.
Entire project was completed and acceptable?
Yep, and we got, uh, we had a change order a while back for, uh, the bit of damages, ten days left of the damages on it, so, um, we did go ten days over, uh, past the condition date, so that was, you know, we did change it for that a while back, um, so that's figured in here. It was seven fifty day, thousand day, so we got some damage back on that, so, um, but, but my, 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 my. A thousand dollars day, ten days, so we got ten thousand dollars to change around, so.
Was there quite a bit of pushback from the contractor on that?
No, and, you know, I, at the time, you know, it, it really impacted things to the bridge, as you know, and so, uh, you know, I think that, uh, there was enough, uh, I don't think they, they had dared pushback, I guess, on that because of, because of how upset everybody looked at the time, so I, I think, uh, there were, it was.
So, the scare tactic by a contractor is nothing more than a scare tactic. So the scare tactic by a contractor is nothing more than a scare tactic.
Yeah, I, I mean, especially when it comes to a D O T contract, I mean, uh, the, uh, you know, I, we always have, or I personally. And other towns that I've worked have had problems making the damage stick on, on a job where it's just contracted between the city and the, and the contractor. You know, there's always an excuse, there's always, you know, and.
It's what they are.
And so, uh, but on a D O T federal aid deal like this one, it's much easier and much, uh, better to, uh. They're, they're usually a lot easier to make mistakes. And the D O T has some support behind you, you know, and they won't let you bid another job or, you know, that kinda stuff, which, which, you know, cities don't have as much, uh, pull on that sort of thing, so. Um, so, yeah, on this kind of job, it's a lot easier and a lot better.
Thanks for your partnership and cooperation.
Uh, like I say, apologize for long delay here and, uh, about to finally have it off my plate, I guarantee Randy has been, uh, on my, I'm getting this thing closed off. As long as, uh, as you guys probably have been, so. I apologize, but, uh, I'd have to hang this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, yes, thanks everyone. But I apologize, I can't get, I don't have, have been involved in the projects, I, I wish I had some better and support on some of that stuff, but I'll, I'll take the comments back to the folks in the room and, and bring in the rest of them, so.
Thanks.
And this is a roll vote.
Kay.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Rod.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Betty.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Ten point five, discussion and possible action approving the final pay request to Horsefield Construction and the amount of. Fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents for the twenty seventeen S D P Street Project.
Move to approve.
First, first by Rich, second by Betty. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Carried. Ten point six, discussion and possible action on resolution authorizing economic development forgivable loan agreement with Charlotte Shekall.
So moved.
First by John.
Second.
Second by Kay.
Um, so. This is L M I funds, right?
Correct.
So, once we do this and, um, we move on. Is there a way that we can be educated on L M I funding? And maybe everybody else other than me has a better understanding of it? And that we come up with how that's to be used in the future?
Yes, uh, I intend to kinda develop some sort of program that we can inform the public on so that we can make, uh, good use of this money.
Because is, am I correct that L M I is. Is associated with low income housing?
Low to moderate income.
Which I, I'm okay with doing this, cause we need to be moving forward. But I would like to see more L M I used in residential areas as opposed to our downtown buildings. And use like the, that catalyst grant or the, um, community block development for our downtown. So it would be nice if we could come together and come up with rules for L M I funding. I'm not sure if downtown's really the place to be putting low to moderate income families. I mean, we gotta work with businesses and we gotta work with everybody, I think we need to have a balance going on.
Right, it's, you know, it's resi-, it's a residential.
Right.
portion of that, and I know some communities, what they'll do is periodically, maybe say. If you're gonna paint your house or do something to your house. You can apply for five hundred dollars and you ma-, will match your five hundred dollars up to five hundred. You know, so they've got different programs along that line to help improve the look of buildings, houses that people are living in.
Guidelines would be helpful.
Yeah.
Guidelines for use would be very helpful.
So, I mean, there's, there's different programs that, you know, you kinda wanna cap it so that it's not. You know, it's a limited fund, it's not just an open book.
Right.
So.
Yeah, and I think too, it's okay to have it for both. Single family like, um, owner, people who own their homes and also for landlords. That have rental properties, cause there's a shortage of rental properties in the area too.
The only thing you gotta be make, make sure of is they're low to moderate people living there.
Correct.
So that's, that's the, the thing we gotta make sure of.
Yep.
So, yeah, no, that's good, we have a lot of things ahead of us, I think, that'd be good, thank you. Thanks, Rich, I like that idea too.
Any further discussion?
Well, Tammy, could you give, clarify the breakdown again on. This agenda item?
As far as the original promissory note?
Yes, please.
Uh, the original promissory note that Charlotte signed with the city was for ten thousand, eight ninety-nine, forty-seven. And that included the seventy some hundred dollars, seventy-five hundred dollars, I think we used to repair the building. Um, originally, plus the attorney fees and such. So, um, this agreement then would cover, um. Up to seventy-five hundred dollars from that L M I fund. So that, as far as the semantics on how it's gonna get moved around, that's a question for John and Jacob. Um, but is, then the balance Charlotte would still owe, probably in the same terms as this forgivable loan, the three hundred dollars amount.
They're separate agreements, so I mean, all the funds do, in that original promissory note, stay due under those terms. I mean, again, there's no prepayment penalty on that, so if she was to pay that early fine, but if whatever she owes on that, that would stay the same as, as is, this is.
Separate.
Separate.
Okay. But the original amount was ten thousand, eight ninety-nine.
And when you say this is separate, is that seventy-five hundred still has to pay off that ten, right? Pay down that ten in order to get E C cog money? We're not taking L M I money and giving it to Charlotte, uh, and then.
So. Um. These funds are, are. For, uh, redevelopment of low to moderate income housing. Now. How she repays that other obligation to the city is her decision. Does that make sense, they're separate?
Okay, yes.
Think about it in terms of, think about it in terms of this, the ten thousand, eight ninety-nine is to purchase the property. The seventy-five hundred is for her to use to bring the property up to date and livable. Whether she uses it to pay off this ten thousand early and then use her own funds.
Okay, but I'm confused now, because it was to my understanding, E C cog came and said, as long as she owes the city ten thousand.
They, 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 they had originally requested that it be a forgive, for- forgive part of that. Promissory note.
And did we agree that we're gonna take?
But they, they were aware of this alternative plan and they were fine with that, they've already approved their own.
And, and ours was contingent on their approval, based on ours doing, us loaning her, giving her the seventy-five hundred.
So she doesn't have to take the seventy-five hundred to pay down the ten thousand?
Technically, no, but she still has to pay the ten thousand back.
She still owes the ten thousand.
No matter what, she owes that back at.
It's a cash flow issue for Charlotte, I guess, is how you'd look at it. If she wants to do that or pay us three hundred dollars a month per.
So I was so way off then.
The path of the transaction is we are going to, in a sense, cut a check to Charlotte. For this seventy-five hundred dollars coming out of the L M I fund.
Cool.
Which is forgivable.
Well, well, Charlotte, would you, please? Let me just ask you, what is your plans for the seventy-five hundred?
My plan for the seventy-five hundred is to move it back to the city, pay off the ten thousand, eight hundred some dollars, uh, using the promissory note. The three thousand and three hundred that was left over will come out of my pocket to pay the legal fees.
So.
No, as I understand it, no L M I or E C cog money can be used for legal fees.
That's how I understand.
Yeah, so after you're all said and done, you plan on having this paid off almost immediately after you received the check for seventy-five hundred?
If I get the seventy-five hundred in December, of January, I will pay the seventy-five hundred back to the city. I'll have it saved in my account and apply interest for a loan.
And was I wrong in thinking that E C cog was making a contingent on this? I serve on E C cog and I totally would under- misunderstand everything.
They, they want, they, E C cog wanted, uh, the money to be used, uh, to get it back, because. Their, their loan is forgivable.
Mm-hmm.
The ten thousand dollars is forgivable. Uh, they were afraid with the thirty-five thousand that's going to take to repair the roof. Plus paying back the seventy-five hundred would be too much of a strain, because. The income that I would be getting from the renters would not cover thirty-five thousand, the seven thousand, the, uh, taxes and insurance. Their loan did come through, we signed the papers on October twenty-third. Since that time, I ordered the windows, um, Michael Vincent, and your son will be putting them in as soon as they align in ours. Uh, I've talked to, uh, police of the electric, I need to have the meters moved outside, cause all the light meters now have to be outside. They've got these special meters that they, they use now, so that's in the process also. And when polyvinyl chloride, uh, looking finishes and anchoring it, they will be coming down to move the other one. So progress is being made. Uh, there is a ten month window that I have to get the building completed for the ten thousand dollar loan, forgivable loan.
Thank you, I just, I thought I understood it that a certain way.
Also, to make it clear, as part of the agreement that I signed with the city. That the original ten thousand did not need to be paid back until I started renting it.
Correct.
So I can pay back the thirty-three hundred that I owe anytime between when I get the loan and.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Your hair looks nice tonight, too, by the way.
And it's a roll vote.
John.
Yes.
Rod.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Betty.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
Kay.
Yes.
Eleven point O, City Administrators Report.
Not too much, um. I'll be meeting with Andrew March to make our gain to. Assess our waste, or water treatment plant and how it's going, kinda make, make our final decision on how we want to approach. Um. The divi-, the contractor and their failure to meet the obligations of the contract, so. We'll know more after this week, um. And then, uh. Um. Maybe the only other thing is I know we've got the Jim McDonough office coming up, so if you haven't got your tickets, half the time.
That's all you had?
Yep.
Twelve point O, Mayor and Council Reports on the Boards.
The Library Board met on Monday, talked about physical budget, fiscal budget. And some building maintenance issues, they are, the board did grant the approval to participate in the U N I. Daily old photo projects that they have. So, some of the old photos that show, I don't know, daily living activities like horses and, and wagons. Harvesting grain and stuff has been, have been submitted from our county there, and that's all I know.
Anybody else?
I just have one question, were we supposed to approve bills tonight? It wasn't on the agenda.
They're in a packet, but they're not on the agenda.
I included it in the packet, but didn't put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Nice. I didn't catch it.
I had thought of that too, I like.
Well, I, I thought, what are the bills doing in here, it's not on the agenda.
I don't know how to handle that.
Well, if it's not on the agenda, we can't do it.
We can't approve it.
I can't send checks out.
Am I on here?
That might change.
We might bend the rule.
Got a special meeting? For bills?
I'm so sorry.
It'd be a five minute meeting.
Can we do it for seven o'clock tomorrow?
I've got a.
I'll post it now.
I've got a meeting tomorrow night for tourism.
What time is it?
Starts, it's supposed to start about five, but I don't know how long it'll last.
Well, you don't need to be here for the bills unless you got a question on one.
Well, I do.
Well, then write it down.
Can we do it Wednesday night?
I'm good with Wednesday.
The twenty-eighth?
What time?
So you're busy, Rod, or?
I believe so, yes. And Thursday.
Besides, we can't do it tomorrow night.
At seven.
Unless she gets it posted right now, at seven.
Yeah, we have to post it right away. It, yeah, it needs to be at least posted.
What time do you go to work?
How about Wednesday, five A M?
I leave at six thirty, no.
Well, I could do it.
Yeah, I leave about six twenty in the morning.
Oh, well, that would make it really early.
We could do it at five.
In the morning?
Yeah.
Sure. Or do it at six in the morning.
Have you ever had one at five in the morning, that would be fun, I could do it, I could do it.
I've suggested this a couple times, every one of them, early in the morning.
What time do you leave for work, Rod?
I'll be on the move before that.
Okay, bad idea.
I'm on a short period, so I can be here any time. Um, it would be five minutes is all we can.
It wouldn't take long. Can we, let's just set it at seven thirty tomorrow night?
That's fine.
That way I can make sure I'm done.
Well, that way, she's got time to post it.
Time to get it posted.
Alright, seven thirty tomorrow night. Alright, anybody have anything on more boards and commissions?
It's only about four minutes.
Alright, thirteen point O, public with business, with accounts on items, not on the agenda. Nobody's jumping up, so we'll go fourteen O, adjournments.
Motion.
Second.
Rod, first by Rod, second by Rich, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.